We will go to the meeting to order and rise to the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eeny, if you can.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salfield?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mary DeWort?
I am here. Motion now to approve the consent agenda for tonight with the closed city completing and with the revised agenda that we have.
So move it.
Order. Discussion or changes? Eeny?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mary DeWort?
Yes.
Councilmember Salfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes. All right, before we do citizen comment, we're going to turn the meeting over to Mike Burns here for a second.
We're about to announce two promotions of city staff. In the last couple of weeks, I've decided, out of the office last two weeks, but we've had two promotions that we've announced during that time. The first promotion, I'm going to turn it over to Rich LaBonbarde so he can announce the promotion that's been made in his department. And then for that time, I'm going to turn it over to the police chief, Bucor, to announce his promotion.
All right, thank you. Rob, would you stand up, please? I want to introduce Ralph Brecken. He is our utilities coordinator supervisor. Utilities supervisor? I can't remember the titles, they've changed so much. Ralph's been here about 18 years and just received his promotion recently. And he's been a loyal and good employee for the city of Lowell, so congratulations. Congratulations, Ralph.
Chief?
One of the benefits of having a part-time staff is it's kind of like having that Griffins Farm team that moves someone up to the red wings. Kind of like your good friend Justin Applicator would be that. That is one benefit of having part-time employees. So I'd like to introduce Mike Stevens. He's going to say a couple of words.
Hello, I'm Mike Stevens. I've been with the department for two and a half years. I graduated out of Fair State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Played rugby for out of Fair State University at the time I was out there. And I've enjoyed the department and I'm excited for the opportunity on the promotion.
Any other stuff?
I'm not scared.
All right, we'll move to citizen comments. Right, who's not in the agenda? All right, let's get that. Item four, open business number A, the Unity School Development. Mike?
Since our last meeting, we've learned some things about what we need to do for the next step. At your last meeting, you approved a resolution because we felt at the time this needed to meet the requirements of the Planning and Enabling Act. So at the time, you made a recommendation to refer this to the Planning Commission to return, make a recommendation back to you essentially. We learned during this, during the last two weeks, and Dick, please correct me if I'm wrong, the master plan was never, the master plan, the Parker Recreation Master Plan was never approved through the Planning Commission, meaning it never, it doesn't need to follow the Planning and Enabling Act requirements. Also, the REC plan was actually, to my understanding, was actually never, it wasn't approved by DNR, correct? Mike?
It was submitted to DNR as a part of, submitted to the DNR as a part of getting a trust fund grant.
Correct, correct, correct. So what, the next step, we figured out what the next step needs to be. We've met all the requirements for DNR on our end before, for them to consider the land convert, the land conversions, the transfers of property. That being said, the next step at this point would be, at our next council meeting, we will present a resolution to the council that will, that will do two things. The first thing it will do is to make amendments to the Parker Recreation Master Plan, basically identifying the land transfer. The second, the second action would be to approve the land conversion, basically the transfer of property. And both of these things still need to be contingent with and approved by the DNR. That ultimately has to happen in order for the transition to occur. There's a, there's a number of items that need to be submitted to DNR that both the city and Unity Schools Developers LLC are working on. But once that resolution is presented at the next council meeting, it'll just be presented. It has to sit for 20 days per charter. And after the 20-day period, the council can decide whether or not they want to vote and wait for DNR to possibly approve it, or they can just wait until DNR approves it. That is, those are your options. But though, that's where we're at at this point. So we learned a lot through this process dealing with this project. This project has been very tricky because of the land grant requirements and even the provisions in the city charter. So it doesn't look like it's been the cleanest type of project, but it, these are all necessary steps. So we will be presenting that back to you beginning of the next council meeting.
One thing that I think we need to address yet, though, is the completion of this project, the South parcel. I believe, Mike, you've worked with those, with the developers a little bit about possibly purchasing the South piece, or we've proposed that to them?
That hasn't been proposed. That hasn't been proposed. I don't have the authority to propose that. I mean, I've had discussions with them about future options. That's about all I've done.
I very much support this project, but I feel we need to address the issues of access to the boat ramp and turnaround there. Jerry Zanscher had mentioned to me when I met with him that he felt that the city should have just bought the South parcel when it was for sale at a separate price. And the proposal that I took to Mike, and I believe you submitted that to them in theory, was that we could get an option to purchase that at that price that it was listed at. But I won't be able to support this until we clean up all of the sense on this personally, just for myself.
Any other comments on that?
I'm in the same camp. I think as this process has gone along, we've seen a lot of things that were left undone. And I don't think we should continue to leave things undone. I don't think they have any intention of blocking access to the river, but I would just like to see that spelled out. So it's a pretty big deal. Obviously, if we could purchase the South piece, that would solve all the problems, wouldn't it?
Right, or you would just get an option that would give us three years to purchase it was what I thought was a good compromise.
Okay, well, that's a whole different discussion. So anything else on that, Mike?
No.
Item B is the showboat demolition. Now, Rich?
Department of Public Works requested quotes from five firms to demolish and remove the entire showboat structure and pontoes from its location in the Flat River. The following is a summary of the four responses we received. The lowest quote being from Earth Firm Dosing and Excavating in a Roll for $6,000. Funds for the demolition project are available from grant funds received for the showboat construction project. If awarded, Earth Firm Dosing can begin demolition as early as the week of February 25th. I recommend city council accept the low bid of $6,000 and award the demolition of the showboat to Earth Firm Dosing and Excavating, and further authorize the city clerk to sign the proposal on behalf of the city of Lowell. And one other thing I want to add is, I believe there's been a request from the Blau family to receive the paddle wheel. And I'd like to know if city council would entertain that donation to the family. It's a last-minute thing, by the way.
I don't, I'm speaking just for myself, but that showboat's only there because, damn, if they want a paddle, then I'd say we give them a paddle. They can have whatever they want off that boat, in my opinion.
Yeah, they should be able to, they should be able to go, if they want a paddle wheel or they want anything else, I think they're the ones that should be able to, you know, go over and say, I'd like this, and we get it moved to where they would like.
Good. And then the stuff that they don't want, I think, at least they should be able to look at that, too, because a lot of that.
Yeah, there's discussion. Yep, there's some discussion of using some of the trim pieces for fundraisers. So I'm just talking a bit of, of where you want that just this evening.
I think the Blaus should get first crack at it, and we'll do what we do with the rest of that.
Right.
All right, now, motion to approve.
Well, we can do this. I know we take their first. Do they have the proper bonding to be taken, to be working in the waterways?
We will go through a pre-demolition process with them and cover their schedule, their bonding, their assurances, all that sort of thing.
They're doing it in the water, right?
That's our proposal, is to just have them work onshore and pluck it out of the river. And we want to do it while it's frozen, so that we don't have to worry about it in the middle of the day.
Grab it off you. All right, now, we'll look for a motion to accept Earth Firm Dosing's bid.
I'll make a motion that we accept Earth Works Dosing and Excavating in an amount of $6,000.
Support that?
All right, any other discussion? Eeny?
Councilmember Salfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mary DeWort?
Yes. All right, new business, speaking of, one of my favorite presentations of the year, the Lowell Historical Museum presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having us again this year to give you our annual report. I brought a slideshow this year, so you can see some pictures as I go through. I passed out to each of you our annual report, so this gives you all the numbers on all the different programs we've given, all the different events that take place at the museum throughout the year. And then I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to give you a snapshot of what we did in 2018 over at the museum and out in the community. The mission of the museum is to preserve and present Lowell area history. So we do a lot of different things to that end. And this year, 2018, we really had a big emphasis on education. Some numbers to give you to start off with. Total attendance, we saw 29,145 people through our building, through the different education and public programs that we provide to the community, which is a rather astounding number for an organization our size. So we're pretty excited about that. In addition to the FaceTime that we saw with people, we also had 28,221 individual visits to our website last year, which again is a testament to the amount of outreach that we're doing and people looking to the museum for research and programming and that sort of thing. We have 104 different artifacts donated to the museum this year. Our collection policy states that we collect things that pertain to the history of Lowell, so it's got to help us to tell the story of what's happened in Lowell's past. And this year, we had 104 different things come in the door. We had 23 free admission days. While we have a rather low admission fee, we do recognize that that's sometimes a hundred, so we try to offer a number of pre-admission days. Throughout the year, we have one free Thursday every month. And then we also tie in with different chamber events. So we're free during girls' night out, Christmas through Lowell, different events that are going on in town. We try to be open those days, free of charge, so that people can come in and see what we're all about. Our museum has three part-time staff, which add up to about one full-time person, which as we go through some of the things we've accomplished this year, you'll recognize are just not possible without the help of our many, many volunteers. We have about 41 active volunteers who help us out in every facet of everything that we do at the museum. And this past year, they logged 2,242 and a half hours, which I'm pretty sure is a low estimation of their hours. I don't think we got everyone's every hour. But we really do rely on our volunteers for everything, from school tours to public presentations to the day-to-day operations of the museum. So we are really grateful for all of our volunteers and everything they do for us. This year, we had a big emphasis on education. If you're not familiar with what we do with the schools, I wanted to give you a little snapshot of that. We start seeing kids in first grade. The first graders come for an introduction tour to the museum. They come back in second grade and do a past versus present tour, where we take them through the museum and look at different time periods and what life was like in Lowell in different times and compare it to their lives today. We also see second graders out at the Wittenbach Nature Center. We do the Pioneer Maple Syrup program out there for them. So we're out in the woods in a cabin, showing kids how people tap maple trees, frying donuts, giving them taste of fresh maple syrup, all that kind of thing. We have two full days of school groups and then the public day is always on a Saturday, so we're out with that. We also go into every second grade classroom and do a Grandma's Trunk program, which talks about early immigration and pioneer life in Lowell. And the kids do a lot of hands-on activities with that. You can see in the top picture, some kids doing laundry, and they churn butter and do all sorts of fun activities to get a sense for what life was like in the past. In third grade, we see the children again out at Heidi's Farm Stand. We do a fur trade post out there. Luanne Cave has built a fur trade post, and it's staffed with a fur trader. And the kids go out in the woods and meet the fur trader and learn how the fur trade worked here in Lowell. And then there's a Native American village in the woods, so they wander into the village and learn about camp life and what life was like for our early Native American community. And then they encounter a pioneer barn and learn about pioneer farming. Third grade, we also do a museum immersion program, which I'll tell you about in a moment. And in fourth grade, we see the students one more time for Michigan History Days, where we do a number of different programs with them. So that's the basis of our elementary school education programs. We do also have an active college internship program. We've been partnering with Kelvin College and taking an intern on in their history department and training them in museum studies and collections management. And we've been partnering with Fallsburg Historical Society with that. And the intern has been working with us to help organize and computerize the Fallsburg collection. So kind of a nice two-part, three-part collaboration there. The museum immersion program that I mentioned was a real big push this year. We started this program three years ago with a pilot project, where we had one third-grade teacher come in. And the museum immersion program gives the teachers the opportunity to use the museum as their classroom for two full days. They come in and they do a number of different activities and research projects and writing and all sorts of great stuff. And the teacher designs it with the museum staff to meet the needs of their individual classroom. So it's highly special to that teacher and that class, and it's all curriculum-based and driven. We expanded it last year and took on three third grades. And this year, we've expanded it. We're seeing every third-grade classroom in the district this year. So we've already seen Murray Lake. We have Eltocks coming the first two weeks of March, and then Cherry Creek is coming in April, right after spring break. So we're super excited to be able to see all the kids for all this time. They do great things, like they come in the first day and they look around the museum and they find something that's interesting to them. They draw a picture of it, tell us what it is. And then the staff takes that and does research for the rest of the day on their artifact and finds everything we can on their artifact. The next day, the children come back and we have an exhibit writing activity. So we go through their packets, look at everything that they can learn about their artifact, and then have them write an exhibit label about the thing that they were interested in. So it's those kind of activities that give them the chance to not just walk through the museum, but really learn about the history of the museum, absorb it, find the things that are interesting to them, and then really relate to those things so that they really absorb the information and understand it. And this program, it just amazes me. I'll run into kids every now and then in my year, and they'll come running up to me after two years, and they've had another thought about their artifact. So we know we're reaching them. We know they're retaining those stuff. They really are thinking about history and absorbing their local history. So this has been a really big expansion for us, and we're really excited to be able to see all Lowell Area Schools' third graders this year. We also have a program for preschool students. One Monday a month, we do a museum for tots program, where we open the doors to zero- to five-year-olds. And they come in and do arts and crafts and get to explore the museum with their caregiver. And that's been a really popular program. It brings in a completely different audience for us. And then we do a youth summer camp every year. This year, we did a pioneer camp out at Fallsburg Village, so we had the kids building covered bridges out of wood and dipping candles and putting on plays in the schoolhouse. And we had five different activities. They got to pick their favorites and rotate around during the day. And then Kent TMP, the president of the Fallsburg Historical Society, took them on a history hike around the village. And they hiked all around and got to run over the covered bridge and learn how that's changed over time. So that's another great offering that we have for children. In addition to all of our programming, we have a bunch of great exhibits at the museum. If you haven't had a chance to stop by, I encourage you to come by and see our exhibits. We are going to be upgrading a couple of exhibits this year and introducing a new changing exhibit on Robert Graham, who built the museum building, as well as some other buildings here in downtown, and his son Ernest Graham, who grew up in the Graham House and then went on to Chicago, where he became a very famous American architect. He worked with Daniel Burnham and did some really famous public buildings, Chet Aquarium, Field Museum in Chicago, US Post Office, Selfridges in London, really big name buildings. So that exhibit's going to explore the history of that family and their careers, and that will be opening this fall. Every year, we do four public programs where we invite the public to come in and learn about different topics in local history. This year, we debuted a history at Oakwood Cemetery. We did a tour. We had different stations around the cemetery where people could learn about the lives of previous residents. We do our Summer Fest fundraiser every year, where we spotlight different businesses in Lowell. In each gallery, there's a different restaurant or caterer, and then local beers and wines, and it gives people a chance to explore the museum, see our grounds, see our exhibits, and enjoy everything Lowell has to offer in the summertime. And then just our regular services of preserving history. And we answer a lot of research requests and genealogy requests. We've got our interpretive board project on Main Street, Lowell, working with the showboat committee, all that sort of thing. It's a lot of collaborations and being available to answer questions as they arise in the, in the community. So I would just like to thank you all for your support of the museum and everything that we're trying to do to bring history alive in Lowell. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in tonight to share our previous year with you. And I can answer questions if anyone has any questions.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B, public hearing for King Milling Industrial Development District.
We received an industrial facility tax credit application for the new construction of a 41,000 square foot facility to pack in a warehouse package flower at 149 South Broadway, otherwise known as King Milling. This property is located on the former Michigan Lawyer property. As you recall, we have created an industrial development district for this parcel at the January 22nd city council meeting. The city council is being questioned if they would be interested in considering a request for industrial facility tax credit for King, King Milling, which is part of the facility. If interested, the attached resolution would need to be approved. Industrial facility tax credits are abatements of 50% of real and personal property taxes on the new investment. Since the state of Michigan will completely phase out the personal property tax on all property in 2023, the impact to the applicant is the real, is mostly the real property on the new expansion. King Milling has received IFTCs in the past. During my tenure, we have provided IFTCs to Lighthouse and Big Boiler Brewing. IFTCs may be established for up to 12 years. My recommendation has been to initially grant a five-year credit if you wish to do that and then have the applicant returned for the remaining seven years. This ensures the applicant has been compliant and along with assurances that they've been paying their taxes timely and things of that nature. King Milling meets the legal requirements to be considered for industrial facilities tax credit. This project revenue would be captured by the Downtown Development Authority and would not have a negative impact to the tax base. However, the DDA would only capture 50% of the new taxable value of this project except for school taxes during this abatement period. Since this is a political policy decision of child council, I will not provide a recommendation on this. However, this does meet the requirements per the statute, and this has been an established past practice and has been beneficial to businesses seeking IFTCs, industrial facility tax credits. If the city council wishes to approve this, then Resolution 8-19 is being presented for your consideration.
Historically, we've done this for expansions that create new jobs, right?
That is a component. That is a component.
Maintaining existing jobs, right? It's not creating any new jobs?
Correct.
Well, I sit on the planning commission, and we approved that new building. And that building was, that we approved was 30,576 square feet. And now we're being asked to reporting 1,000 square feet. I'm curious where the extra 10,424 square feet is.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to open the public hearing first.
Oh, all right. We will open the public hearing to discuss the industrial development district for King Milling.
Perry Beach, on 924 Riverside, 924 Riverside. I support King Milling, and I also support the Doyle family. They do a lot of charitable things in the, in the community. I would ask that, that King Milling could possibly help in a solution of getting water back to the Ball fields. And along with that, I would also ask that King Milling help in, assist in financially putting in the sidewalk that's going to run along South Broadway. So, but I, I do support King Milling and, and the Doyle family. Thank you.
Okay, question about the square footage. The, the footprint of the building is 30,000, 31,000 square feet. But if you add, as you see now, there's structure going up. There are some floors in there. Then add the actual 10,000 square feet.
I understand that, but I don't know, does that, that doesn't encompass the entire square footage of the building. That is only its footprint that it sits on, the taxable. Correct?
My understanding would be the entire facility.
So.
Because it's the real property. It's the real property.
Okay, so it's everything then?
Correct. The real property basically is the exterior of the, and the land.
Good.
Anybody else?
I extend their hand.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, he wasn't.
Close, close.
All right, we'll close the public hearing.
Well, yet they still met the criteria that I was, I was really kind of disappointed in, in the job creation part of it. And I know that accounts for quite a bit of the actually that they could possibly get. So that is a little concerning, but as Chris said, they do do a lot for the community and that's just my take.
Right, no, I agree. Usually, these projects are to encourage someone to locate here or provide jobs, but we also have to look at the long term. They are making a significant $6 million investment in this project roughly, or the taxable value, the SCV.
So, yeah.
Double that than the value. But there will be significant tax revenue from this down the road. And the Doyles and King Milling have been fabulous supporters of Lowell. Half of our parking lots in Lowell we wouldn't have if it wasn't for their support of allowing us to use their properties. They've been a great community project or a supporter and partner. And although this doesn't exactly meet what you look for in every application, they do provide a lot of jobs. I believe you're Lowell's oldest employer?
I think so, yeah.
About 126 years now or something, but just. But just for that reason, I support this.
All right. We'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 8-19 for the industrial facilities tax credit. And that'll be for the five years, correct?
Yes. I'll make that motion for Resolution Number 08-19.
I'll support.
Any other discussion on it? Amy?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Item C, Fair and Edward State Health Insurance Administrator.
For a number of years, the city has been serviced by Hub International to administer our health insurance plans for our employees. They have serviced our employees' wealth. While they have serviced us over the past year, our property and liability insurance broker, VHS, has approached the city to have them administer our healthcare plan in addition to our property and liability insurance. Understand, the agency representing us pays directly through the premium we pay to our providers, which is Priority Hub. So there is no direct payment to the administrator in addition to the insurance premium the city pays. After meeting several times with VHS, I feel we received more value from them than we receive currently. I've met with VHS on a number of occasions over the past year on services they would be able to provide. These services not only just include just administering our plan, but they also include human resource consulting, where we can use them as a resource to assist us with H R-related issues, such as recruiting and hiring, policies and procedures, performance management, and record E B requirements. Additionally, they will be able to provide us with an onboarding benefit administration system we do not currently have. New and current employees will be able to complete the new hire information and make benefit selections online, minimizing paperwork for our staff who administers this. Further, VHS will make sure our benefit plans align with our negotiated agreements. Additionally, they've already found something incorrect in one of our current agreements, which we've already corrected. By the city switching to VHS, this will allow the city to have all of our insurances administered by one firm. This, to me, makes administering our insurances more streamlined by having one firm rather than multiple. Additionally, it was discussed with VHS the possibility of developing a wellness plan for staff with the goal of reducing insurance premiums going forward. This will have no impact on our current insurance coverages as they are licensed to sell Priority Hub insurance. If we were to be administered by VHS this time, they can allow them to prepare our plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Charlie Schlosser and Greg Harris from VHS are here tonight, and I'm going to turn over to them. They can kind of explain what they offer and bring to the table. But I recommend you that the city use VHS as our benefits administrator for employee insurance plans.
We use them already for property liability, almost.
Thank you for your time. You might know Rick Harris. He's one of the shareholders of VHS. He's the individual that does work beyond your commercial lines, workers' count, liability, things of that nature. I work, in our agency, we separate different lines of coverage. What I'm working with is your employee benefit package. The biggest thing that we have to offer to you is your time. This, Mike quickly went through a lot of my presentations, so I don't need to repeat it all. But just to give a little definition of what I mean by time. When you have a questionable new hire, questionable termination of employee, you don't have to call legal counsel. You can call our office. We've got portals that your employees can use for training purposes at the supervisor level, your any H R-related questions, any compliance questions that you might have. You know, with the A C A, the Affordable Care Act, there's a lot more compliance requirements for employers. We've got all kinds of resources set up, ready for use. Some of them, as is already stated, have already been used. The benefit administration system. If you quickly think of how many forms Lori Gerard has to handle. When I'm a new hire, my I-9 forms, all my employment forms, I got to fill out a Priority Health form, I got to fill out a DUMP form, I got to fill out a life insurance form. Going forward, your employee's going to be able to go online, fill it out at one time. Lori's not going to have to send it out to Priority Health, to your DUMP carrier, the Mutual of Omaha. She's going to send, going to go to our office. We're going to send it out to all those carriers. We're going to try to raise the awareness and engagement of your employees into your benefit package. The city pays a lot of money for your insurance package. We want to make sure that they realize what they're getting. Part of this will be done through this benefit admin system. There's also ways we want to bring another resource to your decision-making process. Today, generally, a business manager, a business owner is going to meet with their agent consultant. This is what we think, this is what we got. But one size, what we're going to try to do is survey your employees, okay? One size shoes not fit everybody sitting around here. So is the package that's being offered what your employees want? We're going to try and gather that input, bring that information back to Mike and your management team in regards to, not only here's the price, here's the things that we think we ought to do, but this is what your employees have to value it. Whether it's, you know, maybe they want two options. Maybe they don't like the current plan. I always give the example that, you know, if I'm standing next to my boss, one of the shareholders, and he asks me what I think of the coffee at the office, I'm going to tell him it's great, okay? But then I stand next to my coworker, and we talk about the coffee, you know? It's better at 7-Eleven. So what we're trying to do is offer services of bringing your employees' input back to the decision-making process in a non-biased way, because we think they're going to open up to us a little bit more than what they would you. And if you notice what I'm not saying is I'm not saying I'm going to tell you that I'm going to reduce the cost of your health insurance. The size of your group is sort of limiting what's going on there. But what we are going to do is give you that time, soft dollars, to manage and spend and do other things. And we've really designed packages for small and medium-sized employers that allow that to be done. Time, engagement, appreciation of what you're doing for them. Questions?
I see in there you mentioned something about the Wellness Employee Program. Could we carry that a little bit better to the city overall, to residents, to say, how do we become a healthier Lowell? And everybody benefits from it, other than just saying, here's what we recommend for employees, but here's what we think. Community?
I wouldn't mind taking that initiative on, because I'm a resident here, you know? So not only do we want your business on VHS, I'm going to take a lot of pride in working with the local also. So that isn't really, working on a community basis, really isn't something that VHS might take on as an initiative. But if there is a committee, things of that nature, I have no problems with getting involved.
We do have Lowell Wellness now. They do a pretty good job, but I mean, they have ideas. We can steal that and then give them to Lowell Wellness and then take credit from them.
Right, right. There you go.
Any other questions? I will also say that I think pocket squares are an underutilized accessory, and that is a fantastic thought.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Recommended motion is to use VHS as our benefit administrator for employee insurance plans.
I would make that motion to use VHS.
I'll support. Any other discussions? Amy?
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right. Item D, 2020 Budget Calendar.
Michael. We are beginning to prepare the upcoming fiscal year 2020 budget. My responsibility in the city charter is to provide the council with a balanced budget. I will ensure this occurs by the third Monday in April, as the city charter requires me to. While it is obviously important to engage the council and the general public regarding the proposed budget, I will be holding another annual all-day budget session on Saturday, April 27, 2019. Department directors will be presenting their budget line item by line item on that day. The public hearing for the budget hearing, the public hearing for the budget will be held on Monday, May 20, 2019. The council can approve the budget that needed any, or if we need to make changes, we can do so. Listed below are the dates you need to be aware of. February 20 to March 26, 2019, department directors prepare and work with the city manager and city treasurer on budget worksheets. March 26, city manager requires the department directors have their budgets submitted. Between March 26 and April 9, city treasurer and I will be reviewing the budget request, and I'll be making modifications as needed. April 9 through April 12, we will be putting that budget, we will formalize that to publication. April 15, the budget will be submitted to council. I will actually not be in town that day, Rich will be handling the meeting, but I will have the budget submitted probably the 14th.
So you did that so that we beat up Rich?
Yeah. Well, you'll beat me up two weeks later. April 27 would be the budget work session. May 6, 2019, would be the public hearing. The public hearing date for the budget hearing would be set at that meeting. May 20 would be the public hearing for the budget. And if the governor can approve it tonight, then July 1, fiscal year 2020 begins. Recommending the budget calendar as approved, as presented.
Anybody have any questions or need any dates changed? Okay. Motion to approve the budget calendar as presented.
How approved the budget as presented?
Support.
Okay. Amy?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
All right. Item E, Resolution 919, Installment Purchase Agreement. The cost of the control panel, what is that?
That is me, first of three this evening. Good evening, City Council. Before I ask you to approve a half-million-dollar loan that Lowell Light and Power is willing to pay back, I thought I'd give a macro-level overview of what we've been doing for the last couple of years. Lowell Light and Power, in the 2011 timeframe, purchased two used combustion turbines. And for the last six, seven years, we've been in-house getting those up to running shape. Both have been commissioned, they have air stack tests, they're operable. However, our Solar Combustion Turbine, and that's the name of the vendor, it's not the energy that's produced, it's the manufacturer. The Solar manufactured turbine's control panel is a vintage 1988 version. That's obsolete, not supported, and really is not reliable at this point. The last two years, Lowell Light and Power has been going through the process of receiving proposals, tweaking proposals, and just waiting for the right time to make a move. And we believe now is that time. So Casey Muir, our new generation superintendent, and Tom Russo made a recommendation to the Light and Power Board at our last meeting to go forward with purchasing a new control package for that combustion turbine. The cost of that is $497,553.80. We considered purchasing that with cash, but we wanted to see what the debt market offered. And the city council can basically obtain a short-term loan through an installment purchase agreement. And we submitted, or we inquired for proposals from nine banks, and the interest rate we received back from Macatawah Bank was 2.15%. And it's actually cheaper for Lowell Light and Power to pay for the project by issuing debt over a three-year time period, just over $1,000 cheaper, just due to interest rates and cash flows, than to pay cash immediately. So the Lowell Light and Power Board's recommendation is for the city council to enter into an installment purchase agreement for this project. If you do so, you'll see that the next item on the agenda is a payment agreement with the city council so that the Lowell Light and Power Board would be paying this debt on the city's behalf. So this would have zero financial impact on the city council.
All right. So Resolution 919 is just to enter into the purchase agreement, right? And then we'll move to your payment terms on the next one?
Correct. 09-19 is the installment purchase agreement itself.
All right. Motion to approve recommendation for Resolution 919.
I'll make a motion that we approve on 09-19.
Support.
All right. Any other questions for Steve or Perry? Amy?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. We'll back to Steve, Resolution 1019.
As I just discussed, Resolution 1019 is an installment purchase agreement, payment agreement that states Lowell Light and Power will be covering the debt service payments to Macatawah Bank on behalf of the city.
Acceptable terms. All right. I'll look for motion for Resolution 1019 then.
I'll make a motion that we accept, Resolution 1019.
I'll support.
Anything else for item D?
Mayor DeGore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right. Steve's on fire. Notice to terminate 1927 Village of Lowell, Michigan Bell, joint-use pole agreement.
I probably should give the background for why this is even on the agenda tonight. And I have to thank Dennis Kent, who's in attendance, for helping us out. Dennis and I, once in a while, talk shop and what's going on with the electric utility. And in the dock edition portion of town, Lowell Light and Power has a voltage upgrade project, and the board has made the decision to go forward with that project by going from overhead to underground. And Dennis was aware of this project. And it's a two-phase project that we plan to happen over this summer and next summer. Just about three weeks ago, I think, tonight, Dennis sent me an email and said he had a door hanger on his door from Utility Contract Incorporated stating that there would be aerial fiber work in his area of town that would involve, obviously, hanging new fiber on the utility poles and tree trimming. Dennis sent me an email and asked if we knew that AT&amp;T was going to be doing this, or if they knew about our upcoming projects to remove all the poles. The next day, I called Utility Corp., and they got me in touch with AT&amp;T. I explained to AT&amp;T that the Light and Power Board was going forward with these couple of projects. The poles would not be there. It would be a waste of their time and money to go forward with their project. In addition to that, I explained that we did not receive pole attachment applications for them to attach to any of our poles, and that we did not have an agreement with AT&amp;T to be on any of our poles. The next day, I received an email where the 1927 Michigan Bell Telephone Company and Village of Lowell joint-use pole attachment agreement that is included in your packet this evening. There has not since been an agreement that has replaced this, so it's currently in effect with the Village, now the city, and AT&amp;T, who is taking over Michigan Bell. The agreement is out of date. It's not in compliance with current National Electric Safety Code standards, pole attachment application and procedures. In fact, the fee for them to attach to a pole is 10 cents. Forty-five times under market today. And I don't believe the city's actually received any payments from AT&amp;T for attachments. So regardless of what does or doesn't happen with AT&amp;T, that project, the Light and Power Board, myself, Mike, and Rich have been made aware of the situation. Me and Dick, obviously, he's our attorney, he's reviewed the agreement. We need to replace it with something more modern and standard that meets all the current procedures and codes. That agreement has been developed by the Michigan Municipal Electric Association. It's the association that Lowell Light and Power is part of, along with 39 other municipals. Recently, there's been, I think it's Public Act 365, Senate Bill 637. It's a small cell wireless 5G bill that all electric utilities must be in compliance with. So there is legislation that by June 10, Lowell Light and Power needs to be in compliance with. So that new agreement developed by the M M E A will allow us to be in compliance with state legislation. So the first step is for the termination of the 1927 agreement that's in the city's name. And the recommendation would be for Lowell Light and Power to execute, or to terminate on the city's behalf. Now, the agreement was executed July 15, 1927, with an initial 10-year term and one-year renewals afterwards.